All right, good afternoon, everyone. Plunkton School Committee meeting for Monday, April 23rd, 2018. I would like to just start with a couple of things here. One, I'd like to note that the meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video is not considered an official public record. We have a hearing tonight, but I'd like to first acknowledge our visitors. From teachers, Mrs. Quaid Rosi, it's Quaid Rosi, and you, good to see you. Then we have Jessica Ziole from the paper is here as well, and then Peter is for CASA, and Jill Powellstein is joining us as well, and she is actually on the ballot for school committee. So, we actually have a crowd tonight.
Yes.
Now, there's pressure. It's exciting. So, to make it exciting, why don't we go ahead and we're going to open a public hearing with respect to school choice. I'd just like to give a brief overview for the audience, particularly those up there watching, what this is about. You're required on an annual basis to hold a hearing regarding school choice, which is regulation within the state of Massachusetts, which allows schools to open up class availability to students that do not live within the bounds of town. We do currently have a number of students here at the Denit, in total, that are part of our Denit community here. We're very pleased to have them. And what we will be talking about this afternoon is whether we are going to open additional slots for school choice for the upcoming year. And just to clarify, we have, correct, we have five in grade three, and then one each in grades two, one in kindergarten. This has nothing to do with those slots. Those slots are here through sixth grade, as long as they want to be here.
Yes.
But really, the discussion here today this afternoon is whether we can open any additional slots in any of the grades. So with that, the hearing was duly posted.
Yes.
So I'll take it myself. It's like, "Oh, you're having a hearing?" I said, "We are."
Yes.
My name. But I guess as part of the hearing, one of the things we do is we ask for any public input. So, I would first ask whether there are any folks in the audience who would like to speak in support of school choice. If there are none, I would also like to ask if any of the audience would like to speak in favor of school choice. So with that, you can motion to do the close of the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on school choice.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, from a board perspective, would folks like to offer any thoughts about school choice for opening additional slots for the upcoming school year?
Out of an abundance of caution, Peter, we can say safely that there are no siblings who would like to enter into kindergarten next year of current school choice students.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we do not open up any slots for school choice in addition to the ones we already have this year.
Any additional discussion? Second motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that, we're done with that. There we go.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Steph and I are having issues logging on to the computers. We can't even get through these things on screen.
So we have no access to our paperwork at this point? You don't want to just fly by?
Be more than happy in your capable hands.
Let's take a moment.
There we go.
Well, maybe what we can do while we're waiting on that, is kind of move around a bit with respect to the agenda anyways, because it's my prerogative. Since Ms. Peters is here regarding CASA and the driveway sign, I would kind of like to move to that one. We kind of poke around and see if we can get anything. So, welcome.
Hi. So, as everyone has probably seen, the sign has taken a beating over the years. We did look at it to see, we know it was a local artist that did it, so we did look at it to see if it could be repaired, and there's just, no. I can't believe it lasted past this winter. But we do, we are trying to get as close as possible to the original. So we do have plans for this huge sign. And this is description right there of the one that we did pick out. We are having the granite post. There was a few options. We thought granite would be the best way, that, and we are getting those donated to us. And it is a little bit different. It's an eight-by-eight granite post instead of the six-by-six, so.
That's nice.
Very nice.
With or without a top on it? Just a regular post?
I believe it's going to have the top also. They like that look. So, we had a few options, and this is the one that we did come up with. And the material, I believe, is listed on that also.
Yes, I'll read this.
Yeah, so it's not, it won't rot?
It says here, this would be a one-side sign, foam sign panel, two inches thick, routed out background, leaving letters and images raised. Elementary school lettering would be V carved, so that would be that the channel would be around that. The sign would be installed with granite posts, but it looks like we would do the posts ourselves, and then they would be installing the sign.
We have a company that's going to do it for us, so. And I believe the location of the sign, we might have to move it forward a little bit because of the wires, but the people who are putting in the granite posts want to come look at it because they think they might not have to. Looking at the sign, I don't think it would be a bad idea to kind of bring it up just a little bit, so it's more, so you can visibly see it. I think it's probably around the same size, so to bring it out a little bit, and we're talking about, you know, gardening and stuff around, but just to kind of screw it up even more. Kind of, you know, I saw the Pacifica bushes out there, and I'm tempted to go over there and kind of trim them up with. No, no, good. So, what we're excited about it is kind of long overdue with it. I know the light, the electric, Chris was saying that it's all set, it should work out there fine. So, that's something else we have to look into, is what we want to do for lights. I think that would be our next step, is to see if we wanted to spotlight, or like, I think they have like a truck lighting underneath it now, that's really not there, but, so.
I think one of the things with lighting on that is that it's probably important to make sure that, to the best we can, that we downlight it more so than uplight it, and just keep the light to the sign. So, you know, clearly in this day and age, LED, but, you know, the sign probably doesn't need to be, you know.
No, no.
"I'm here," but enough that they see it, because when we do have events here at night, we've got many people say, "Yeah."
It's so dark.
Good funding.
Well, then, I was thinking of like the neighbors too, like, you know, to have a huge, all of a sudden have a huge light, that it won't be. So, we'll look into that, and I'm hoping that we have electrician within the, you know, parents that will volunteer to do that for us, so.
Yeah.
But I think it'll be nice, and we're trying to go with, you know, the old-school print too, with the little school cups and stuff, so.
Next.
Comments, thoughts?
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Exciting. I know how much time and effort's been put into it and glancing at it. I think it's beautiful. I cling total ignorance in signs. I think you guys did a great job coming up with something that's attractive, but also reflective of our community.
Yeah, small school.
I have no comments other than, "It looks nice to me."
Yeah.
The only, the only comment I have on it, I think, is just with respect to the caps on top of the posts.
Okay.
You know, that's, it's something they, you know, especially with an eight-by-eight post, I think the post is going to be impressive on its own.
Okay. Not to have.
And it's one less thing that's mechanically fastened, there's something else to not be mechanically fastened when the, whether the boxy or something else comes off, and then you have to go and put it back.
Okay.
That said, I'm not, it's not a make or break thing from my perspective, but I think by going with some really nice, that's a big post, and that's going to be really impressive.
I think that was just a change now, because I just messaged her, and she said, "Yeah, I think we're doing eight-by-eights."
Yeah.
It's a good.
That's great.
Nice.
Because if you think about most mailboxes that you see with a granite post, that's four-by-four. So you're looking at a times that, basically. So that will, that will be quite a statement with the sign, but again, and then, of course, if you think about it, then the thing on top has to be well by twelve.
Huge, yeah.
So.
I like the thought of it, too.
So, that would be, that would be my thought.
Okay.
I suppose we should, we should make a motion.
Are we just approving the design to let them move forward?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the design as presented by CASA for the sign in front of our driveway.
Second?
Second.
All good?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a really helpful project.
Okay. All right. So, why don't we move on to minutes?
So we can't access them right now?
Do you have a chance to wait?
I did.
Or no?
Our PDS won't come up now. Don't know why. We're in my email right now, but the PDS won't come up. I'll make a motion to accept our March 26th, 2018 minutes.
Hey, Ellen, hey.
Hi.
Okay. From correspondence perspective, we just received a bill for green seal, which we just passed along. That's our consultant working on the, working on the water treatment. And as folks can see out there, there's been some roughing out. We'll get to that in a few minutes. Any other correspondence received? No? Okay. New business, annual report, that was provided to town, so we're all set with that. About all I have to speak to on that. And then, unfinished business, we have a different type of sign, so thank you for that. So water treatment, we have, as I understand it, it was an exciting week here in the end of last week.
Yes, it was.
Quite much going on. We have a, folks will see that there is a hole in the driveway, right near the brick walkway, and underneath that is a big tank.
Correct.
For taking the, taking the backwash for the new water treatment system that's going in. So for those who thought that we'd never see that day, you have broken ground and things are progressing, so, there we go. So that is, that's, that's great news there. And so they got, looks like what, they got the whole tank in and the piping up to a point?
It looks like it's coming right up to the building.
Right.
They haven't broken through anything yet, but.
They're going to do that when they do the inside work.
Correct.
Okay. So that's all. It's all good. And then it, it looks like they still have to pave, which I know is part of the thing. I saw it. Probably an invoice today, so that's.
Yes.
Part of that's, there we go. So any other questions for folks on water treatment? Again, we're still, I think they're still putting along with hopes to have it in by early summer.
Correct.
Playground safety, modernization.
So, I would like to thank Christine again for giving me that business card of a woman who works down on Cape Cod named Nancy White. She has been the only email I've received back from my many emails requesting assistance and help and guidance. She said that she's worked on projects for public schools in the past, and she'd be more than happy to assist us in the project. I did speak to John about this and how we would bring her on, what her consulting fees are at this point. She still hasn't given me her estimates for that, but we talked about maybe some consulting on the front end to help us build out our project and come up with our idea. And then, obviously, if she noted to be a project manager and moved up to that point, she could put into that position as well. She has extensive background in playground safety and accessibility, which are two of the main reasons why we want to move forward with this program. So, I wish I had some numbers tonight to get some guidance and some permission to engage her further. So I don't know what your pleasure is at this point, Mr. Chair.
I mean, just to, just to level set, we've talked all along, and this has been sort of overshadowed by water and the generators blowing apart and all of this stuff, so we're kind of refocusing on this now that some of our work is moving along. You've always talked for your pluses or your half on this about looking to leverage some funds that we have, but also to leverage community preservation funds. As part of that, we would need to by early this fall, September, early October timeframe, to be able to go in with a fully baked proposal with firm numbers to CPC. As a result, we pretty much have to do all of the upfront work, not only for consulting for some part of that, to, geez, what could you do and all of that, but this is the plan, and here are bids to, that we take to do that, both some pretty extensive site work, I would think, out here as well, as the actual structure itself. So that is certainly something beyond what I would expect the administration to do, or even Kara to do from a facilities perspective. She can certainly help, but I don't think that's necessarily her focus. As a result, you know, we've talked a little bit about this, is it makes a lot of sense to get someone on board to help us, one, determine what we need, as well as then to help us get the numbers together in a firm proposal that is actionable. So, I mean, I guess we could authorize up to about, today, I just don't remember when we would get that. You know, whether, yeah, so, I guess I.
Do you have any idea? Cost, what a potential cost? I, yeah, I don't.
My only frame of reference is the new playground at Kingston Elementary, and I just know what the total cost of that was. I don't, I'm not sure how that was broken down.
My concern here is times is the essence.
Yeah.
And even if we could have her come out, and Peter and I could speak with her, and we could get a couple of companies who would be more reasonable to try contacting instead of just a scattershot, I'm just blindly emailing people at this point. Even if it was five, 10 hours worth of some consulting that we could have over the next month or so, so maybe we could reauthorize more funds if needed at our next meeting in May.
I know of two districts that recently updated playgrounds, and I had offered before.
I know.
Would you now like me to pursue, because I'm pretty sure I can get a response?
If you, wouldn't I enjoy?
I would not mind.
I would appreciate the assistance with Marshfield.
Marshfield, and I believe Cohasset also had a, had to do some upgrades.
Okay.
And I know the business manager there, he was a former superintendent in this district. I'm pretty sure I'd give some information for him.
Think so?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, now that we can, we can refocus some of our energies in other directions, Joy, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, absolutely. I, I, I'll try to at least get you some basic information. I'll do that tomorrow.
So, would it make sense, 1,500 for initial, not to exceed 1,500 for initial consulting services? And then with, with the plan that we would have some, a better idea of estimates for the next meeting if you offer us?
Yep. That was what I was hoping we would do, but I just wanted.
So that we can get a couple weeks ahead.
Exactly. So we don't waste any time. Okay, go.
May I just clarify?
Yeah.
That would be coming out of school choice funds.
Out of school choice funds.
Correct, that was my understanding of the.
Okay, I just wanted, I'm sorry, just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Do we have the capability of uncovering those funds in this fiscal year?
I guess, I was thinking the motion maybe should include where the money's coming from.
Yes, we have that motion.
Yeah, I just, that's why I was clarifying that.
The funds that are available for school choice do not have any parameters and dates on them, so they are, because we've been collecting the funds for several years now, so we have a balance.
Yeah, we have the balance, and I haven't spent anything out of the debt.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure, right? And making sure it works. And even, even with spending part of the water treatment out of that, we still have more than enough.
Yes.
Balance-wise.
We have a sufficient balance.
So, I make a motion that the Denit Elementary School Committee allow up to $1,500 to be spent from school choice funds for the purposes of playground consulting fees.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It's exciting to actually start moving forward on this project.
So, we still have future meetings scheduled on here, and we're going to have some plans.
I, yes. So, this afternoon, I actually sat down with the calendar and played around a little bit with the draft, but I apologize because you may not be able to.
Christine gave us hers.
Oh, okay, great.
We're happy, thank you, Christine.
So, it was sent to you by Lisa. So this is extremely draft, but it, it was at least a beginning. So what I did was I did six weeks for the fall, every six weeks, so starting for Denit, we already have a fund. So the end of September, November, December, and then the regular monthly meetings, because I think for the budget season, we need to have those. So January, February, March, and April would be the regular month, and then in June, and then the July meeting would be our closeout. Again, it is more complex than I thought it was going to be when you start trying to work around four different committees and not having them at the same time, and not having them on vacation weeks, et cetera. But if you wanted to just look at that and see if it made some sense, I used basically the exact same date layouts as Old Rochester did, with their four different committees in terms of the layout. The only thing that I changed was I kept January, February, March, and April as monthly because of budgets for all four districts. So it's a start. Let me know if you think that could work, but I think it was at least a good, at least a good beginning. It's the first time I've really had a chance to sit down with a calendar, so.
So, in essence, we're knocking out the October and the August meetings potentially, or is there more savings?
The, August, we have traditionally canceled, so I didn't put it on the calendar, you know.
We just haven't been as good about that because we've had issues come up.
Right, right. I mean, and again, we can always add.
Right.
But, but, you know, I didn't schedule August for anyone, because traditionally, you know, we haven't done them as often. And then it's basically six weeks for September, October, November, and then once we get into January and budget season, then we're, we're full speed ahead.
Well, we're pretty much.
It's just a first draft.
I love it.
I'm, I'm open to suggestions. As I said, it was, it was an interesting.
Cheeks up, I say.
It was. It really was.
I'm keeping my mind set, I just focus on number one. You got to look at two, but I'm just looking at that.
Right. Well, I'm pretty sure I'm not two places simultaneously. That was my main concern, wasn't it?
I thought it was three.
Yeah.
Two was management.
But it, it does get a little bit more complicated, and then not trying to have them on top of each other, you know, is the other thing, because, I mean, again, I, when you put them all together, I think you realize, you know, when Christine has to get the warrants ready, and when we have to get ready for school committee meetings, you know, it really is a little bit complicated.
Will this cause any issues with getting warrants signed anytime in there?
John's able to sign the warrants, which we would still keep on a monthly basis because our bill collectors would like that, you know, to still get them in Halifax and in Kingston, who would have somebody elect to be the single, single-starter. So. And again, the committees may choose not to, you know, may not like the concept of it, but everybody keeps talking about it. I think most people seem sort of interested in it. I think everybody's sort of feeling, you know, we have a lot of meetings, so.
But the caveat is, you can always call more meetings.
Exactly.
Covers us. And the fact that we could give a little bit of release time, so God forbid you could go home some evenings, or do other things that are more important than sitting around this table, repeating the same information for different times.
There's something more important.
I'm totally in favor of this whole concept of rewriting the schedules.
Right, as I said, you know, please take, take a little time to look at it, see what you think, but it's, it is based on the Old Rochester schedule. We, you know, we did the same concept of it. The only thing I did differently was we have more meetings, because I couldn't see every six weeks during budget season. We kept that monthly. So that's, you know, that was, that was a piece that I, I did, but I tried to lay it out otherwise, and it actually seems pretty reasonable to me, again, for our first try.
Yep. Is there any regulation for DESI for how many schools from the meetings we technically have to have?
I don't think so. I don't believe so. I mean, I think a lot of schools do do monthly, but I think more of them are starting to, you know, like Old Rochester, especially regionals, because it's just a lot of meetings.
That, that would be my only question to compliance, I, I.
Not that I'm aware of.
The collaborative task has six meetings a year.
Right.
Per DESI regulation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, six sounds good.
Yeah, those.
Yeah. So you have this as an email attachment, these are sent at the end of the day. I just finally had a chance today to play with it.
So I think let's, let's keep this on the agenda for next time.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
And with a new foreboard, I do want to give the opportunity for the new board to make a decision about its schedule.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we normally wouldn't vote this till June-ish, when everybody's on board, but as I said, it was something I've been meaning to get to, but now that we're sort of past most of the budget information.
I'm sure the town clerk will appreciate the June 30 meeting instead of the meeting right after.
Yes, exactly.
So many a times, you're turning people in right up there, so. All right. Why don't we move on to standing committees? Administrator review, is there anything you want on that?
We had a meeting, and they went over my evaluation, and if you or Steph would be interested in it, we can send it to you as an email attachment. It was given out at the meeting.
Anything we should know about?
They questioned my sanity, but other than, it was all good.
Proficient and exemplary were the common words.
That's excellent.
And we were mentioning how lucky we are to have Joy as our superintendent, who we hope that she stays with us for many years to come.
Thank you.
That is the official minutes from the meeting for our very humble superintendent.
Many jokes that I make about the campus.
Yeah.
Okay, nothing for negotiations. April 12th meeting for you and 31?
That was, the admin review was.
That was it?
That was it.
Okay. Mike's not here tonight, so I'm sure that we have a pack update. Policy.
No, thank you.
We're done. Done, done, done.
Actually, there are a couple that came out recently that's next on my list, but I'm not sure if we'll get to it this year or soon, but it is.
For those that don't know or didn't watch last time, for the last couple of meetings, we went through a complete redo of our policies based on 60 odd policy recommendations.
It was 100.
100. See how the mind tries to make it seem less painful?
Yeah, it was very painful.
So, those are done, so what's good for there. Capital improvement, anything? So, it's starting to get warmer, so maybe we'll get a little more on the roof.
I'm hoping to be able to.
Maybe do it next month or so, maybe. Legislative?
So, I actually have good news. The House came out with its version of the budget. It has not been officially voted yet, but they loosened up a couple areas of the budget that would impact Plunkton, but also potentially Denit to a small extent. It's better than going the other way, so that's the good news. Headed up to the State House on Wednesday for the legislative meeting with school committee members. So again, if you have anything you'd like me to bring to their attention more on that, feel free to email me alone, so we don't get into any problems with open meeting violation. But I'm going to be pushing again for the Foundation Budget Review Commission's findings from several years ago to be adopted by the state legislature, to have circuit breaker funded at the full 75% every year, so we don't have to worry about it. And just to keep us in mind when they're developing the budgets and realizing, we serve people, it's not just dollars and cents.
Reason why you're on legislative? Thank you. And I do not believe we had any single signature warrants for this last hearing.
We do not have any.
Okay. Moving on, Nino, the report.
Thank you.
Current enrollment is two hundred four students, and being in the midst of MCAS season, we have a lot of dates to go over, so I'll try to go over these somewhat quickly. April twenty-fifth is the Grade Three English Language Arts MCAS. That's the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. On the twenty-sixth, Grade Four will be taking their field trip to the Museum of Science. There is a school community meeting at two o'clock on April thirtieth. I believe Grade Four is hosting that this month. On May fourth, the Grade Six class is having a pajama fundraiser. Also that night, there is a Grade Six basketball game versus staff and parents at the middle school at six-thirty. On May seventh, Grade Five will be taking their math MCAS. That's the seventh and eighth for them. Grade Six will be taking their math MCAS on May ninth and tenth. On the twelfth, Grade Six will be having a car wash from ten to one at the fire station. May fourteenth, Grade Four will be doing their math MCAS the fourteenth and fifteenth, and then Grade Three on the sixteenth and the seventeenth. And Grade Five has the bonus science test on the twenty-first and twenty-second. We also have a school committee meeting here at five o'clock on May twenty-first, because we have a lot happening in the building.
Can I just kind of update on future enrollment? So where are we with?
Right now, for kindergarten next year, we have thirty names. Twenty-five of those have already sent in paperwork, so we have five that we know of that have not fully committed with their paperwork yet.
Any view into additions in any other grades at this point?
No. Peter and I just had a discussion after he gave his awesome presentation on the response to classroom about maybe next year having a couple of times where some of the students could come in and show us work that they're actually doing to remind ourselves why we come here, once a month or every six weeks, and get it on camera. We could let those students go first and still get home and have dinner in a reasonable time.
That'd be great. We periodically have student presentations in Halifax. We have a couple of teachers who really seem to like to bring them in, and all the parents come, it's great. So in Kingston, a couple of times it's happened also.
You guys might be a small audience.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty fun. It's pretty fun.
That'd be great. Great idea. We'll move forward with that.
Thank you.
I know there they do it as teacher volunteers, like the teacher that's coming anyway. So it's not an extra commitment.
So Emily, any other updates from CASA that you might want to give?
Still looking into doing a fund run. Throwing out some dates now, so had a look into it, see if it was really worth it for the small school, and looking like we might do it, so. Haven't signed the contract yet. Just still look at it, because we're such a small school, but Kingston did so good with it as a fundraiser, so we know the kids would really like it, so I think we're probably about ninety percent sure that we're gonna go forward with that.
Just finished also.
Yes, and they love it, so.
They really do.
Kids would love it.
The whole school's in an uproar, but it's great.
Yeah. That's what we were talking about with dates too, because we keep on saying, like, it's beginning of the year, we can't do it near May, so throwing out dates and stuff, but it looks like it will be fun for the kids, so that's something we're looking into, but.
Excellent.
Yep. Pretty much it right now. So usually you have to be a very, very small group at the CASA meetings, which loves to get more people there, but you know, it's fine.
To that end, if folks out there would like to help out, say, if we come back to CASA, please, you know, please reach out, and I'm sure we'd love to have you, and you guys do a bunch of things for the school.
Yes.
And that's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Oh, the really fun stuff.
I do my best. Actually, the financials are doing pretty well. We're, the last quarter of the year, we're doing okay. You know, we had a few areas throughout the other, CASA concern on tuition reimbursement. For the teachers, we were having problems earlier in the year, and it has not grown since last month, but that item could still potentially grow through the end of the year. And as you know, we did increase our budget next year to cover what this year's been like, and then to even grow from there. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention is on page two of the detail, let's see, about halfway down the page, there is a deficit under the custodian area, custodial services or supplies. You know, what has been happening is that we have staff in place now that are able to do a lot more in-house than instead of having to hire a contractor. So our supply line may be raising, we have some deficits there, but hopefully we have some savings in other areas under the contracted services line. And then just a couple of inches below there, we continue to have a deficit under contracted services because of the generator. And at town meeting, we are looking to make a transfer to cover all the costs that were associated with the generator. If that happens, we should be back in a much better position. And then as you look through the rest of the budget to get to the bottom, there's some surpluses there. The whole special education area has surpluses in contracted services, tuition and transportation, so there aren't any critical items in that, that area. And then on the last page, the auto district vocational, we continue to have our surplus, and right now, it would take something pretty significant to change that for us for the end of the year. So even if a student did move in and we paid for transportation, it would be minor. And so there continues to be a balance of about a hundred and five thousand dollars there, and we're looking to use some of those funds for the transfer at town meeting this year to, yeah, some of those other areas that have been a problem.
And so, so no, no specific changes to either the surpluses for special ed or voc?
No.
It's the right answer.
Oh, I have the right answer.
I got it right.
Please, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Christine.
More than a hundred and thirty staff members were trained by the Thomas County Suicide Prevention Coalition in the suicide prevention method known as Question, Persuade, and Refer. This is part of our ongoing social emotional learning, health and wellness efforts that are part of our plan for success, and just an example of another way which staff and faculty have been participating in professional development in these areas. Lana Tereshko and I have been working on scheduling an SEI endorsement class on campus for the fall, we hope. Sometimes the approval process can be lengthy, but we are very hopeful that we'll be able to be able to provide this training opportunity. Lana would be the instructor. She is one of our own Silver Lake teachers. She is an English language learning teacher as well, and she is, she is an approved provider, or I should say presenter for this course, so that also adds another element that I think our faculty will appreciate that's being taught by one of our own as well. In terms of the coordinated program review, all of our principals, including Dennehy, has submitted their time on learning sheets to demonstrate our compliance with the state's regulations. This regulation requires school offer a minimum of nine hundred hours in elementary schools, and Dennehy is meeting that requirement. The wellness committee reviewed the epinephrine procedure proposal from the school nurses, and the school nurses, based upon the expense of parents having to provide schools with epinephrine, and the survey results that were sent out to, to parents of students who require epinephrine due to allergies, have decided that they will send out a letter at the beginning of the school year allowing parents to decide whether or not they want to send in epinephrine. We have standing orders in all of our schools and stock epinephrine that can be administered to children. The exception would be for field trips. Parents would not have a choice about that, they would still need to send in epinephrine for field trips. So that, that letter, that proposed letter has been sent to the superintendent for consideration, and the school nurses think that this will be helpful and useful for our EpiPen users throughout the district. The state held an information session pertaining to the next generation accountability session, and I have provided you with two slides. The first one is for non-high school changes. Again, I can provide you with limited information at this point. These are proposed changes to the accountability system, and the information session that I participated in tended to focus on the potential for changing the ratio of how much we count growth and why that would discount the value or the weight of certain tests, because we don't have growth measures for, let's say, science. We don't have comparative scores for grade three, for example. So a lot of the time was spent on that. And so two of the new indicators that you see here, achievement and student growth, have always been something that we have focused on. However, really focusing on the twenty-five percent of students who may not be performing as well seems to be a critical emphasis in terms of achieving target points and achieving our PPI and CPI in the future. Student growth, they're proposing that it remains the same three to one ratio, three, three being achievement, one being growth. But there was some debate and discussion over that as to whether or not growth should be more because of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which really emphasized the need to focus on student growth. The proposal before the Board of Education is a three to one ratio. I can't say for certain what will happen, but I would imagine that it will probably remain a three to one ratio. I can't say for certain though. There's also a new target, if, if in fact we have a subgroup large enough, for English language proficiency. So we'll be looking at whether or not students with English, English language proficiency are meeting their target goal, but just like our other subgroups, if, we have to have a certain number of students in that category. That is, I cannot promise, but it's unlikely to be an issue in Dennehy because at this point, we don't have, I'm not sure that we have any.
We have none.
So it's unlikely that, that will be a target of concern for this particular school. And then the additional indicator is chronic absenteeism, and this is something that's going to impact our accountability for students missing ten percent or more of their days in membership. And this was something where there remained a lot of questions in terms of what would be included and how that would be calculated. And so how it would be coded is another example. Recognizing that hospitalization is something where students may need to miss school and not something a school has control over, yet will it be coded differently because it can lead to chronic absenteeism? Those, those questions were not addressed in the session that I attended, and I, I don't know that that information yet exists because I, my sense is from other assistant superintendents that they also did not have an answer to that question. So there were a number of different sessions held throughout the state.
And it's dangerous to assume, but you would think it would go along with DESI's policy that came out three years ago about excused absences and unexcused absences and having the reentry meeting after five unexcused absences with both the guardians and the students, so. That's assuming, Jill.
In my mind, there's a level of uncertainty, and so I'm presenting these as potential changes to the system, and hopefully we will know more at the end of April, maybe early May.
I just applaud again, I know I did this at my other committee, but having the ELL, ESL course onsite for our teachers, it is a daunting course to go through, and just knowing you can go down the street and take it with colleagues is, is a boon to our teachers. So thank you for doing that, Jill.
Hi. So I have the draft, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar. It is up on our website for any parents who aren't interested. It's posted on the district website. So next school year, probably feel like we're almost done this school year already, I'm not sure how that happened. Students will start school on August twenty-ninth, which is a Wednesday, so there will be, as we have done historically, three days before the Labor Day weekend, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then a four-day week, and then a full five-day week. We will have our first early release on Monday, September twenty-fourth, that's a half day, a half PD day. We're gonna have our, our full day PD on October ninth, which is the Tuesday after Columbus Day. We move that when we have a large voting turnout, because Halifax and Kingston Elementary School are both used as voting places, so if we have a large election, we have to close and move that day, but this year, there is not a large election, so we'll stick with our Tuesday PD day. We have parent conferences K through six, October eighteenth. November twelfth, we'll be celebrating Veterans Day. Veterans Day falls on a Sunday this year, so we'll have to celebrate on Monday or have the day off, I shouldn't say celebrate, recognize. November twenty-first is a half day for Thanksgiving. We're gonna have a nice long Christmas break. Can't quite believe we're talking about next year already, but Christmas falls on a Tuesday.
Until today, it still felt like winter.
I know, it did, it did. I know, I know. I, I don't disagree with that at all. So we'll have a full week, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth off, and then January first is a Tuesday again, so we'll have seven days of vacation for school, plus the two weekends. So it's, it's a very nice eleven-day break for everyone. I think that will work out nicely.
I hope everyone takes it, including our administrators.
That sounds like a great idea. Maybe Australia is in my future. So Martin Luther King Day is Monday, the twenty-first. You may remember, we used to do a PD day on that Tuesday, but we moved it this year because the secondary was right in the middle of midterms, and so they were having difficulty with the review and, and the whole schedule being off, so we moved it for the Friday before February vacation. That worked out pretty well, except the only problem is because there's slightly different release times for Fridays, this year, we're going to try it on Monday, because Monday to Thursday, everybody's on the same calendar, so.
I was wondering what the story was there.
There's a story, there's always a story, yeah. There was, there was a little bit of discussion about it, so I decided rather than to continue the discussion, I'm just moving the day. So much easier. So February twenty-fifth, so we'll do it on Monday for the PD day. And again, it still serves for the parents in terms of that cheaper flight, for the return flight as opposed to the Sunday, which is sort of the goal for those people lucky enough to go away. Winter vacation is the eighteenth through the twenty-second. March seventh is an early release day, and the twenty-first is parent conferences. April vacation is the fifteenth through the nineteenth, and you may wonder where Good Friday went. Friday, Good Friday actually falls during spring vacation next year, so we won't have an extra day, which gives us some options if we have snow days, but I've already put in the request for no snow days, so I'm sure that won't be a problem next year, because it'll work as well as it did this year.
They listened to you well this year.
We all know how well that worked this year. If I was evaluating on whether, we would be in big trouble. We'd be pleased at what people say on the phone. So high school graduation is June first, and June thirteenth, sorry about that, is a tentative last day of school. So again, this is the draft calendar. It is posted on our district website for parents who wish to look at it. We normally don't vote the calendar until June, once we have all the school committees voted in with our new members, which go across the top of it. Let's see what else we're gonna talk about. Budget discussion. We are all set with the budget, I believe. Christine printed out for you what you have as an email attachment, the version two voted by school committee budget, and also the shared cost budget, which was voted by the school committee. The only question is what number may have been voted by finance committee for vocational? That's the only question I'm not a hundred percent sure of. So once we have that, we have tentatively scheduled a school committee meeting at town meeting, which I always do in case we need to take a vote, so if we need to change that.
We'll need to take a vote.
That would be my guess also.
Should we talk just briefly about, about what happened at the FINCON Board of Selectment meeting, just so that, so we voted our budget on the twenty, whatever.
Yes.
Our last school committee meeting, let's keep it simple.
Yeah.
Based on the guidance that we had from FINCON and so on, as we could, and we have a requirement to vote our budget forty-five days before town meeting, and we.
Which actually is a regional, I just discovered.
Regional requirement?
Because I did, I did check with Fred on that, because I couldn't find the MGL on that. That is a regional school requirement for the towns. It is not a.
But it's, but is it in our, but it's in our regional?
For Silver Lake.
It's not just a policy that we made up, it's part of the.
No.
Part of a requirement.
It's a, it's a Silver Lake regional requirement. It's a regional date. We said for the towns, there isn't a length of time that it has to be voted before town meeting.
Okay, but we were trying to do what we need to do, so we voted at our March meeting and all that. But you attended FINCON Board of Selectment discussion of sort of the final budget and all of that, and there was a desire, I guess, by FINCON to cut the vocational budget because, let me take a step back. The other thing that we have great difficulty with every year with respect to determining the vocational budget is that students have until April first to make an election to potentially go to vocational program. And our meeting is not April first, our meeting is March twenty-something. And as a result, we sort of have to do our best guess and leave enough budgeting there.
Just in case.
This year, we had a sort of perfect storm in a good sense for a change, in that not only did we not have people that might have gone, go, but we had some others who were saying they were gonna go. they were going to go, didn't. So we had a pretty large surplus in the vote line, which is a really good thing from the standpoint that we have generator basically blow apart outside right before the first big storm. And as a result, why there's generators, new generators sitting out there, which we'll speak to in a minute. But from, I think from, and I haven't had the opportunity to speak to FinCon about this yet, but my understanding is, is that they wanted more tightness to the budget, that they didn't want the money sort of out there and then coming back necessarily. If we have money to give back, they're happy to take it, as I understand.
Right, right.
But they did not want to sort of have that extra surplus out there. So when we had our final count and they were meeting with the selectmen after April 1st, they looked to take that tuition budget down and sign. So we will get that, although I did ask the town administrator, unfortunately she was actually not at the townhouse, she's had a training today.
Tomorrow.
So as a result, we don't have that number to re-vote today, but we do that. But it certainly seemed like, and you have to tell me so about this, but certainly seemed like we can do perhaps more communication next budget time to make sure everyone's on the same page.
I would agree to that sentiment. We have a new chair at the finance committee and I think his manner of accounting just might be a little different than what we're used to. And I obviously felt no malice, I felt that he was honestly adjusting the numbers based on some information that he'd gotten from Christine and he put a little bit of a cushion in and even explained that. But when the numbers popped up on the screen, what we voted versus what the finance committee was approving, one of the veteran members of the finance committee said, whoa, the two numbers don't match up, what are we going to do now? And that's when I volunteered to go to the floor at town meeting and say that this isn't a disagreement, it was just because of the timeline that we have with our budget and the flexibility FinCon had with theirs and that we actually do support the number that the finance committee voted and approved themselves. So it would be cleaner if we could have this established for the future runs, but I think we have a way to show the cooperation even in light of the two different numbers at town meeting.
Was the number voted Y10 or do you, do we not know that for sure?
I was a little taken aback by the whole situation and with, with Nate's explanation that he took Christine's number and put a cushion on it in case transportation for the vote went up or something, I don't have the exact number. I didn't write it down at the moment, I was trying to problem solve more than.
Sure.
Take notes.
Yep.
So I mean, I think with that, we will plan, we will need a town meeting just to vote it because we should. I mean, I'm not sure that ultimately, as long as it's voted, whatever's voted at town meeting is what it is. So it's not as much of that, but it's one more thing to be able to fight to, that, you know, we do support change. I will note for folks watching this, and those in the audience too, that it certainly, you know, it's certainly the town's prerogative to do this and I'm not, I'm not against this in any way. I will just note, not that, that the opportunity of course is there, that other things can happen. You can have, as I understand it, if someone moves into town who's already in the program, we now have a liability. And so that may mean, and I think that's fine, if you want to, you can run the budget one way or another. It just may mean that at some point in the future, we end up with a deficit there that we would have to come to town meeting to look to adjust in special town meeting to be able to fund that. All that said, you know, we did have a very good working relationship with FinCon this, this time around. We have a number of things that they have been very supportive of.
They can address.
In fact, everything that we've brought forward, they have supported. And just to, again, level set for folks watching, we have town meeting coming up on the 16th. We have a number of articles on that. We have an article on the regular warrant for e-phone system here so that the gentleman can stay retired. He could fix it. And maybe now he's, he's maybe retired out of the country, so he doesn't have to come back to Denit and fix the phones. So that, that's great and that's on there. And then on the special town meeting, we have a number of things going on there. One is to establish a special education reserve fund or.
Stabilization.
Stabilization fund to the very small minimum that they let us do it, 2% of the operating budget. But not only to establish that, but to take 40,000 to transfer in, 40,000 from monies that would come back to, not only to establish and fund it, but to fund it almost to the maximum of that, 2%. So that's great support there. And then with everything else running around here, especially on the parking lot, we have an article there to transfer from that vote line money to fund the generator that we have to buy, which again is, is not just a generator to replace what we had, but it's an improvement. It's 50% larger than the one we had there and apparently much better than the one we had. And then we also have some additional money transferring from money that we were to return to help offset the cost of the wound treatment. So all of that, or as a part of that, thank you very much for that. And that, part of that is the public service announcement for coming to town meeting on May 16th. So please, use the help.
So again, for in terms of the budget, the town meeting is May 16th at 7 o'clock here, or 7:30, 7, 7.
7.
Plington, 7. Halifax is 7:30.
And then the special town meeting starts at 8, which is actually where the last four of those articles are all sitting in. It's kind of an interesting year this year.
Excellent. I think we sort of covered the generator update. Is there anything additional that you'd like to add, Pete?
I can say that we're getting 400 gallons of diesel delivered tomorrow and doing the generator will be here at some point tomorrow to get the generator up and running and to run the wiring for the new transfer switch. So we're technically still on the rental as of right now.
So we didn't get two for one, which is.
Correct.
Sorry.
Tried to wheel a deal, but.
Yeah.
The machine that's out there now was delivered this morning. Like I said, it's, it was a busy time over the break. They had to pour the new pad, they had to get their prep work done, but we should be good to go tomorrow afternoon.
And does that new transfer switch, does that just replace the old one to do what it used to do or are we?
This is a new one to, to go into the boiler room so that we can start to generate heat. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Peter, if you don't know, could you find out how long a full tank of gas will last that generator at full load?
Sure.
I know. I thought you said two days.
Yeah.
But let's double check that.
I want to double check. The, the, the tank itself will max out at 583 gallons, but they proposed, they said, Phil, give me 400 for now and that, that should suffice.
Because diesel can actually. I'm sure they stabilized it as well.
Yeah.
Ask that question.
It's periodic service.
It can grow organics. Literally, it's pretty.
It's a vibe.
Well, not, not for the running of the generator. And if you could check in to see if it has any agent in it to make sure it doesn't jell out below temperatures. I had an external diesel oil tank and it jelled up when it got below temperatures.
Sounds fine.
When you need it the most.
Absolutely, absolutely. I will, I will find out.
Thank you.
So, okay, so there's a new, the new transfer switch is going there. So yeah, can we just, and I'd like to just validate once they're done hanging up that everything is done so that we have some electricity and some heat to the part of the school that we, we're talking about, which really is the cafeteria auditorium area.
Sure.
Because that, I think that's an important thing to know, be able to tell the selectmen once it's all done, because they want to change their, their emergency management plans.
Certainly.
And it's also, it's a big selling point for why we went this route.
Exactly.
I will do my best to find that out.
And I guess the only other thing we should think about, though hopefully not right at the moment, is just acknowledging the fact that there's one way in and out of here, as we found out in March. You know, what, what if anything can we do or set up so that Denit is a priority for removing, I don't know, trees that fall across the driveway on top of wires that we cannot move? Because even if we have two days, even if we'd had, you know, if we'd had the new generator on here, first of all, the tree's down, you can't use it as a shelter. And second of all, it doesn't matter whether we had a working generator or not because we can get fuel up there for two days.
Correct.
You know, and that was, that was quite a sight.
It's problematic.
Yeah, so I mean, whether it's with, with aversors or if there's something, because I mean, that's, that's a critical, critical failure point for everything that we have sort of pushed for as we, because you and I were standing there just looking at it. We just couldn't do much more.
It didn't move, John, I don't know why. I mean, it's like. But I think it's also going to change the dynamic the minute that it's our town warming center.
Right.
And it becomes officially codified in the town emergency plan.
Right. So that may, that may help.
We would want the selectmen to reach out as well and say this is the number one critical area of the town to get in touch.
So we may, so it probably makes sense in the near term to, once you've validated all of what we believe with that, we can reach out to the selectmen and talk to them about that too, because that, it's just, it's why have it here and not make sure that things get sorted, because that was, that was sort of, there was no way around that.
Maybe we could put the other 183 gallons in.
Well, I think when we get into the, probably.
Yeah.
I think we have discussed building issues. I don't think we have any other ones, thank you very much. And we already did our.
There are.
I've heard plenty, thank you. And school choice, we've already taken a vote. I think we're all set, thank you.
Well, I'd like to take a moment to, we have one of our members who's not here this afternoon due to some family things that came up. So I'd like to thank on behalf of Lee, Lynn Calp, for joining us for these past three years. It's great to have her here. Shame she's not here so that we can do that, but hey, life gets in the way sometimes. So, so Lynn, thank you.
As you said, her special ed background and expertise really lent a different perspective than once to the committee and I value your time. I'm sad to see her go, but hopeful for the future and looking forward to May.
And so with that, just some important dates to remember as we've said in a number of times, I think we might want you to come. Town meeting, May 16th here, Denit, 7:00 PM. Town elections on Saturday, May 19th, starting at 8, 8 to 6, the town elections. We have two positions open for school pay, two people running for them, as well as a bunch of other positions that are open using the town paper this past week as to what's open running. So please come show your civic support, however you prefer to vote. And then our next school committee meeting is slated for May 21st. So I think we'll be busy, 21st, I gotta get. Anything else? Entertained a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, thank you and good afternoon.